So I'd like to call to order the special meeting, a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and the Residential Design Review Committee this evening. And the time's 5:33. Before we get started, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone could face the virtual flag and do the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now, if we could have a roll call.
Yes, and I'm going to go ahead and start with the Residential Design Review Committee. I'm going to call on the RDRC Chair, which is also our Planning Commissioner, Ellen Gart, Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
And then Committee Member Sakai.
Present.
Committee Member Dotwani.
Present.
And moving over to the Planning Commission, as I mentioned before, Commissioner Yakapony is absent this evening, as is Chair Ru. Commissioner Bradley.
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you, Commissioner Bradley. And for the record, I did call on Commissioner Garvey, so she is also here. And then Vice Chair Clements.
I'm here. Thank you. Great. Well, before we get started this evening, I would like to open up a public comment. Public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. The Commission may briefly respond to statements that are made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention, or to have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. So on the screen is the Zoom address, or the phone number, if the public would like to access the meeting or call in, hopefully, you're seeing it if you're on Zoom. But there's the phone number if you'd like to phone in. And if the public would like to comment in Zoom, during the public comment period, if you'd like to comment, please use the raise hand feature. And if you're joining by phone, please press star nine in order to raise your hand. If I can ask staff if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment at this time?
No callers at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I think we are moving on to item five on the agenda, which is tonight's study session. The study session tonight, that we will be providing an update, or staff will be providing an update, gathering input and receiving public comments on the Objective Design Standards, ODS, being developed for future residential projects in San Carlos, and present on the progress, gather input, and receive comments on the Permanent Senate Bill Nine ordinance. And with this, I'd like to turn it over to staff for a presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Martisich, Principal Planner with the city. I first wanted to thank our commissioners and committee members for attending this joint study session tonight, and also thank any members of the public who are here this evening as well. We really appreciate your time and input that you'll give, which is going to help shape how our residential neighborhoods are going to look in the future. We're going to start tonight by providing an update and background on our new Objective Design Standards Initiative, which you will here refer to as ODS. After that, Sir Judy Hawk, our Senior Management Analyst, will provide a brief update on our SB9 Permanent Ordinance progress. And then after those two things, we'd like to open it up to the public, Planning Commission, and the RDRC for any input, comments, and feedback on these processes. I wanted to reiterate that no decisions are proposed to be made this evening, and that there are also going to be many opportunities throughout this process, especially for the ODS, the Objective Design Standards, to provide feedback. So not just this evening, there'll be opportunities throughout the next year or so. The city has contracted with MIG Consulting, a consulting firm, to assist in the development of these standards. These are experts in the field and include professional planners and facilitators. And for those of you who attended our first community workshop, you've met them at that time. I would like to start by introducing Laura Stetson from MIG, who will begin the presentation this evening, and she can introduce her team and take it away. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. My name is Laura Stetson. I am a principal with MIG, and I am joined this evening by my colleagues, Makul Malhotra, who will be sharing presentation responsibilities with me, and he'll also be facilitating some of your questions and comments, as well as those from the public. And then behind the scenes, I have CJ Davis and Stephen Davidavas, who are going to be taking notes and just making sure that we capture everything in real time as we go through this process. First, a little bit about the agenda to cover the Objective Design Standards. This is something new to the community, and so we want to walk through what objective design standards are, what are the goals, what is the process to create objective design standards? We also want to share with you what we heard at the first workshop. We had a lot of great input. And so we want to use that as a springboard for the discussion this evening, and questions from the public and the committee and the commission. And then we'll move to a staff presentation of SB9, because these are intertwined in some manner, and then turn it back over to you for discussion and public comment. Next. What we're concentrating on this evening is our single-family residential development. And the goals that San Carlos has laid out for itself is to adopt new standards, design standards, for residential developments citywide. And this is different than what you have in the zoning code today with regard to setbacks and parking and landscaping requirements, lot coverage, those types of things. Through new state law, cities are also required to address the design aspects of residential development to create more certainty in the process, so that developers, homeowners, property owners know what is expected of them as they move projects through the city process, both multifamily as well as single-family. And the criteria, these ODS, or Objective Design Standards, are being put forward because, as we've mentioned, it is a new requirement of state law. But really importantly, it's more critically important is to ensure that the public knows what, and helps define what those design standards are, what the expectations are, to really create and perpetuate the wonderful neighborhoods that you have in your community today. Next. At this point in time, we have had one community workshop back in the early parts of May, May 4th, to get some additional, or some initial input on objective design standards, and to explain to the community what this process is looking for. We are going to be releasing a survey soon, an online survey, and that both the survey, as well as the meetings that we're having this evening, and with the council, and as we move forward through the process, will all inform the draft Objective Design Standards with a effort first, as I've said, to address the single family, and then to address multifamily. All of this will culminate in hearings just about this time next year, maybe a little sooner, to adopt the Objective Design Standards for both single-family, multifamily, as well as certain types of mixed-use development. Next. So let's talk first about what are Objective Design Standards. And you might even scratch your head if you're a design professional, or even a member of the public who is involved in design review, or just appreciates good design, is you might think, how the heck do you quantify and measure design? Now, how do you describe a color? How do you describe how windows are treated, or roofs, or building materials? That's a tall order, but it's something that the Objective Design Standards will do, is to create the guide, more than guidelines, is the standards, with some flexibility, as to how planners and the public can review a project, and then, more than anything, streamline the approval process for different types of residential development. Because really, the overarching goal that the state is looking for is to create some surety in the process of having residential development built. People need housing, there's a housing crisis, and this is one of many laws that has come forward to help address that. So as I've said, it's kind of hard to put some objective criteria to design, and you might have design guidelines today that, as the sample shows on your left, that talks about the arrangement of doors and windows need to be, in a way, to create visual interest. Well, what does visual interest mean? It means a lot of different things, depending on who you ask. But if you take that type of standard and begin to apply some objective standards to it, some measurable standards, and you can see the example on the right, is that there might be measurements, not saying that you have to do exactly this, but here are some minimum things that you have to do to create, for example, articulation in a building facade. Next. I mentioned that there are a lot of state laws that are coming together to guide these Objective Design Standards, one of which we will talk a little bit about this evening, is Senate Bill Nine, SB9, that addresses single-family homes, and the fact that you can now put more than a home on one lot in a single-family neighborhood. But there are a bunch of other laws that have moved this forward as well. Next. These Objective Design Standards will apply to all single-family, multifamily, and mixed-use developments that allow for residential uses. So those are, all the colors that you see on the map pretty much covers most of San Carlos. And as I said, we are really concentrating tonight on single families, so that's all the yellow. And recognizing, of course, that you've got a diversity of single-family neighborhoods, first of all, defined by the topography, whether it's in the flatlands or up in the hillsides, there are different things that guide development, as well as maybe the era that different neighborhoods were developed in. Next. There will be two parts, or actually two paths, if you will, that the Objective Design Standards create an opportunity for. And let me first talk about how things are done today. And let's just, let's leave it at this place for just a sec, Makul. The existing process is, somebody comes in, they said, "Met a development project, planning staff looks at it, does it comply with the general plan? Any applicable specific plan, or do the zoning standards that apply in the current zoning code?" And it's reviewed by these two august bodies, either one or both of you. And if it meets all of those standards, and as well as some subjective criteria that you might apply to it, it's approved. Or not, it might be sent back for redesign, or if something's really wrong with it, it might really not reject it. I think everybody likes to give somebody a chance to go back and try and fix it before it gets to the finish line. Next slide. The new ODS process will simplify things. So if a developer comes in and elects to comply with all of the current standards that are in your code, as well as the new Objective Design Standards, and in a very black-and-white process, planning staff can say, "Yes, it complies, we've got a long checklist, we compare it, it complies." The project will move to the approval process without going through a public hearing, or any type of review by the RDRC or the Planning Commission. Now, that's if a developer or homeowner chooses to comply with the Objective Design Standards. Next slide. However, there will always be an out if there's something that they don't like about the Objective Design Standards, that won't allow the project to be, their project vision to be achieved, that's fine. They can still opt to go through the current process. So this is a choice that an applicant makes. Do they want something that's fairly clear with certainty? If they comply with all the Objective Design Standards, that's a faster process than if they choose to maybe vary a little bit from the Objective Design Standards, then they would stay on the current track that you have today. Next. So I'm going to turn the next part of the presentation over to Makul, so he can let you know the questions that we asked to really start discussion in the community about what distinguishes San Carlos's neighborhoods, your single-family neighborhoods, and what is it that these Objective Design Standards need to address to ensure that those qualities are carried forward. So Makul, I'm going to go off-screen and off, and onto mute, and let you take this part.
Thanks, Laura. So as Laura said, we heard really good feedback from the community when we did our first workshop on May 4th. In the evening, we had about 45 people from the community attend the first workshop, and it was a virtual Zoom meeting, but it was very interactive. And of course, the meeting was recorded, and you can always go to the website, cityofsancarlos.org backslash designstandards, to see the complete recording of the meeting. But we are presenting today what we asked the community, which is the same questions that we want to ask you, committee members, as well as commissioners, and also share what we have heard from the community so far. So the first thing we started to discuss was, we wanted to learn from the community, what are the overarching elements that contribute to the overall neighborhood character of the different San Carlos's neighborhoods? Because we want to be very context-sensitive. And then the second question we asked were, what were the overarching design elements that contribute to the character of housing that we want to see in the new developments? So, starting with the very first question about talking about the overarching neighborhood elements, we asked what were the common elements, but also individual elements specific to individual neighborhoods. Like we heard, some neighborhoods are in the plains, but others are in the hillside. So we, and some are closer to downtown, others are not. So we wanted to hear as much detail and context sensitivity from the community. So, in big picture, the community was very clear that there are definitely six key values or overarching elements that they want to see in all neighborhoods, starting with number one, being safe. Second was being well-connected to a wide variety of users, as well as mobility options. Be family-friendly, a lot of people talked about how this is actually a family-friendly city, and they want to make sure the overarching elements or the individual elements do contribute to it. Similarly, the community members spoke eloquently about the need to maintain the diversity of design that is seen in different neighborhoods. Views were a key critical component, and then people make neighborhoods. That was again something that the community also was very clear they want to build upon. In addition to these five or six elements, the community members also talked about the need to be walkable, being sustainable and green, and making sure that the, any, any development or standards that are created are flexible, that allow for creativity while still providing certainty. So, in big picture, we clearly heard that the six elements that were proposed were critical to the community. Additional emerging elements included creating walkable and continuous sidewalks, providing landscape and trees, because they provided important shade, and as also traffic calming, and ensuring a flexible design. Other key things that the community members talked about included opportunities to address privacy, as well as adequate sunlight, as well as ventilation. With regards to the second part of our discussion with the community, we began to discuss, hey, what are the various overarching design elements that should be there, not just in the buildings, but also the open spaces around the buildings, in the private parcels? And the discussion focused on different categories that included tree-lined sidewalks, front yards, porches, entrances, balconies, side, as well as backyards, the different shapes and sizes of buildings, as well as the materiality and colors. So, just going one by one, the first thing that we heard with regards to tree-lined sidewalks, it was very well-received. In fact, it was one of the most important things that the community pointed out. And they also said that trees are important because they provide shade. It was important for us to keep in mind to exist any beautiful, mature trees. While we are thinking of trees, we also wanted to, we also heard from the community that there was adequate side distance from driveways as people are getting in and out with the trees in mind. And in all scenarios, which is also a state and a city mandate, we had to maintain continuous and well-maintained ADA-compliant sidewalks. And in all of these conditions, you are beginning to see the sketches, as well as the comments we heard from the community. We are hoping to do the same with the committee members and the commissioners today, as we go into each category and hear your feedback. The second key thing was, in our discussion, was to talk about front yards. Again, this was very positively received by the community, but they began to give us very clear direction in terms of the front yards by telling us that the yard should be sized to provide opportunity for kids to play, to provide and enable the family-friendly character of the neighborhoods that was important to the community, ensuring the landscaping is incorporated to continue to maintain the neighborhood to be attractive. And there was a lot of great, robust discussion about integrating sustainable methods, be it using low-water landscaping or gray water for landscaping. And some of these ideas were drawn out as the discussion happened. The third key element that the community members discussed was about porches, entrances, and balconies. Essentially, elements that engage with the front yard, and as a result with the street, they provide eyes to the public realm. And the community members clearly told us to ensure that these design elements were ADA-compliant, so people of different needs, mobility needs, could use them equally. They also felt that these elements should not be something that is stuck onto a building, but should be holistically integrated in the overall architecture and design, as well as to provide flexibility to allow for these open amenities like porches and balconies wherever possible, not mandate that they have to be there, but wherever there's an opportunity, they be incorporated. There was a very robust discussion also, when we began to discuss with the community of what kind of side and backyards they would like to see. Clearly, the community told us that the side yards should provide privacy and light and ventilation to the new development, while still maintaining that for the adjoining developments on the three sides or two sides of the planned new development. There was a lot of good ideas of exploring gardens in the side yards, and not just thinking of it as a buffer, a landscape buffer. There were also some great ideas by the community of exploring, say, bike storage, and making sure there was, these open spaces were being well-used by the, both the new as well as the established residents. The next community discussion centered around building shape and sizes, and we heard a diversity of comments and feedback from the community. In general, the community talked about, as this new development happens in single-family lots, that we maintain the single-family neighborhood look and feel with the new development that happens. So we can still maintain the beautiful character, desirable character that exists in some of our neighborhoods, and incorporate where needed setbacks and setbacks. There was a fair bit of feedback that sometimes the new development can appear to be boxy, and making sure that the standards take that into account and provide opportunities for the new development to step down and transition to the existing residential development on different sides of the planned development. One of the last areas that the community provided us great feedback was talking about, hey, what kind of materials or colors are they important? And the community asked us to step back and see that one of the key things that is so beautiful about the neighborhoods is the diversity. So, as we think about materials and colors, we incorporate them in the design of these buildings too, and at the same time allow for flexibility to use different materials while maintaining safety. There was a good feedback about recycling materials and making sure this diversity and eclecticness is maintained in new developments. And then finally, they were just general good comments that we heard across the board, and we would love to hear from you, committee members as well as commissioners. But in general, people talked about securing micro-mobility parking for multifamily units. Please keep in mind, we are talking more about single-family in this, but they did provide that feedback for multifamily units. There was a desire by the community to clearly, for us to keep in mind, that when we are developing on hillsides, we need to customize development to be responsive to that, balance the need of rooftop amenity that some of the new developments are seeing with the desire to maintaining considerations for fire, noise, and privacy. And then, again and again, a common theme across all of these discussion items was to encourage sustainability, be it using different materials like permeable paving or recycled materials, low-water landscape or gray water for irrigation, and then allowing opportunities for solar panels on rooftops. So, before we go into the interactive discussion, and the two questions that we would love to hear your feedback is, what do you think are the overarching neighborhood elements, be it safety, connectivity, family-friendliness, diversity in design? As well as to hear your feedback on individual building and open space design elements, such as tree-lined sidewalks or materials or colors. We would like to have that, but just stepping back, giving it back to the city to provide the summary on the Senate Bill SB9.
Great, thank you, Makul, and good evening. My name is Judy, and I'm with Community Development. And tonight, I'll briefly talk about Senate Bill Nine and gather any feedback, specifically focusing on Objective Design Guidelines as they pertain to new SB9 units, and kind of building on that discussion that Makul already started. As a reminder, SB9 state law became effective on January 1st, 2022. And to respond in a timely manner, an urgency ordinance was adopted by City Council on January 10th, and then extended for 10 months and 15 days on February 11th. and then extended for 10 months and 15 days on February 14. And the purpose of the urgency ordinance is to impose some interim regulations and objective standards for the subdivision and development of SB nine units. So just as a reminder, for lots subdivided under SB nine, the urgency ordinance limits to two units per resulting lot with a maximum of size of 800 square feet for all SB nine units with no ADUs or JDUs allowed. And for parcels not subdivided under SB nine, the urgency ordinance actually limits to four total units, including two primary units, an ADU and a JDU with a maximum size of 800 square feet for all SB nine units. And just as an update, since the interim ordinance was adopted, the city actually has received no SB nine applications to date. And this is kind of a similar trend among neighboring jurisdictions as well. We did receive about 15 to 20 inquiries. But meanwhile, staff has been continuing to update the website with any helpful information or resources and developed a SB nine application handout. Next slide. So what does the path to permanent ordinance look like? So building on the ODS discussion, tonight's focus will continue to be on objective design guidelines as they are applicable to SB nine units. So far, staff has been working with the council, the housing subcommittee, RDRC, Planning Commission and the community to gather feedback on design guidelines. Now, since all SB nine projects are limited to single-family zones only, once the ODS are adopted for single-family homes, they'll automatically become applicable to all SB nine projects as well. Now, the goal of the SB nine permanent ordinance is to provide clear and measured regulations for SB nine developments while still maintaining consistency with the state law. So as we develop the permanent ordinance, it's important to note that state law really does limit what local jurisdictions can impose in terms of objective design guidelines. Thus, we'll only be really looking at areas where local jurisdictions do have control over. Now, this include elements such as decks or entrances, fenestrations and such. And there's an overview on the next slide. So after the permanent SB nine ordinance is adopted in October, there may be an opportunity to amend it later if needed, once the ODS project is completed and to ensure that the SB nine permanent ordinance actually complies with the new adopted ODS. And so this slide here shows the interim objective design standards that are currently in the SB nine urgency ordinance. And these standards were developed from researching the best practices from other similar jurisdictions and determining like what really works best for the San Carlos community. So we'll take feedback from the ODS workshop and any feedback from from tonight, focus on single-family homes slash SB nine to update this table. And next slide, please. So this slide shows the anticipated timeline to adopt a permanent SB nine ordinance. So just starting on May 4th, where we had the community workshop with us, we received a lot of feedback and especially focusing on the single-family homes that, you know, may and can apply to SB nine units. Staff also met with with the Council Housing Subcommittee on May 19th to discuss the SB nine project status and get feedback on policy-related items. Today's June 6th, and we're having the study session with RDRC and Planning Commission to get additional feedback on SB nine objective design standards. And then through June and July, staff will use all the feedback we've received thus far to start preparing the permanent ordinance to ensure we have all the feedback from the various stakeholders. And there'll be an opportunity to meet with the Housing Subcommittee, and that's the Council Housing Subcommittee in August if needed, meaning if there are any major changes to the design guidelines, we'll be going back to the Housing Subcommittee to ensure that they are informed. And then staff plans to bring the ordinance back to Planning Commission at the end of August for a recommendation to the council. And the anticipated first reading of the ordinance is expected to go to council on September 26th and the second reading on October 24th. Now, if all goes according to schedule, the ordinance will become effective on November 24th. And that's just a quick overview of how SB nine design guidelines fit into the the bigger odds piece. And with that, I'll hand it back to to Meg. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sojuti. And so with that, I think so. Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, we would like to open it to the public comment period. And I will also bring a mural, we will be recording the comments of both the community that we hear, the public we hear at large, as also the commissioners and the committee members.
And through the vice chair, just to explain, since this is a little different than than our normal public hearings, MIG has some pretty useful tools they'll be using to, as as Mukul mentioned, to record comments as they come in. So our suggestion is to open the public comments like normal, like we would in a regular hearing. And then as we discuss each item, go through the public comments and any commissioner and committee comments as well. And so I believe that the this portion of the presentation is organized into those different categories. So we're recommending that kind of within each category, both the public and committee and commission members can comment if that works.
And if I may ask my colleague Andrea and the and the MIG staff, is it possible, I just want to inquire with the Planning Commissioner, RDRC, whether they have any questions maybe on what they've heard before we jump into the details here or at least offer that, if that's okay with the team? Or at least just check in with the committee, the commissioner, to see if they have any questions on what they've heard so far?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. So if any members of the RDRC or the Planning Commission have clarifying questions, please raise your hand and call on you. And I see Eugene Takai with his hand raised. Please go ahead, Eugene.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Clements. So is today's event where today's hearing the forum by which we would, I guess, provide comments on the draft objective standards? I think there was a spreadsheet that was put up, slideshow and also in our packet with the the various objective standards themselves? Or is is today not the forum for that?
So I'll I'll go ahead and answer that. It's it's a little bit confusing because we have these two separate processes going on at the same time, the odds, ODS and the SB nine standards. So tonight's presentation and the purpose of it is really to get general and overall feedback in terms of what's important to you in the community in terms of neighborhoods and other standards. It's not, there will be time in the future as these are developed to comment on the specific standards themselves because they haven't been created yet as part of this process. The the table you're you're referencing, committee members, Akai, are objective standards that staff came up with as part of the SB nine ordinance. As you recall, that came through pretty quickly. And we wanted to kind of, you know, survey communities and and get some out there. So for the time being, those are what what are proposed and are for the SB nine ordinance. So if you do have comments specific to that tonight, we can, we can definitely include that as well. But the idea really for the ODS is to spend the time, do this outreach, have MIG come back with the actual standards, do a community workshop on those, you know, numerical standards and objective standards themselves, and then move on through the process through, you know, RDRC, Planning Commission, City Council. So we do have kind of on the side these SB nine objective standards that we are, for lack of a better word, are kind of like a stopgap until we get through this larger community process and get, you know, a lot more feedback from the community. Not sure if that answered. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And I, that's very helpful. And my follow-up question, and this is my last question. So on on packet page five, you refer to the urgency ordinance, which limits to two two units per lot with a maximum size of 800 square foot for all SB nine units. Is it, is it anticipated that the urgency ordinance is going to differ in this regard from the the permanent ordinance? Or is the permanent ordinance also going to carry forward with this 800 square foot limit? Because ultimately, this limit is essentially, as as you've noted, preventing applications under SB nine from coming forward due to really economic unfeasibility.
So that's a great question. So at this point, we have not proposed any changes to that to that number of units. So any feedback you give this evening on SB nine, we definitely want to incorporate to bring forward to the Planning Commission and City Council as well. So that that decision on how many units is more of a policy call. So it's not, it's not something we're specifically looking for feedback tonight. But that being said, if you do have comments on that, we definitely want to capture them and, you know, funnel them to the SB nine discussion versus versus the objective design standards.
Okay, great. Thanks, Andrea.
Sure.
Got it. Thank you. I see Commissioner Garvey's hand.
Thanks, Chair Clements. I had a question. On page 23 of the packet, you talk about approvable roof materials, shankled tile, slate. A number of people on my street are putting in, I'll call it a Tesla roof. This is a roof that has solar embedded in it. I have no idea what a Tesla roof is made of, but I'm hoping that it's that it's an approvable roof. Can can you, can you, does anyone, can anyone clarify that?
Sure. So through the chair, I'm not sure either if it is, but that's something we can definitely include as part of the update, do the research on that. And it sounds like you would want that included based on based on your comments. So the other thing, just kind of along those lines is, you know, there's definitely state laws regarding solar, solar access and and being able to be solar-ready. So those also come into play. So obviously, you know, if there's a state law saying solar needs to be allowed, that that would happen regardless of of the objective design standards.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Very good point. About the state, is it zero net energy now a statewide requirement, Andrea? I'm just clarifying on your comment.
Sure, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure when it comes into play. We can find out from the the building official. I I know there's been a lot of discussion about it, but I'm not sure the, you know, the deadline or when it switches over.
Right, right, right. Thank you. Great. Do any other committee members or commissioners have clarifying questions at this time? I know it's a wealthy area of many details.
It looks like Commissioner Bradley has his physical hand raised, so.
Oh, thank you for noting that, Commissioner Garvey. Yes, Commissioner Bradley, please go ahead.
My concern is kind of the big picture of this Senate Bill nine throughout the state now in effect that will we have to repeal our general plan for the city of San Carlos? Because putting that many units on a single-family zone planned and zoned property certainly is not consistent with the general plan. I hope I've made myself clear on that, but it is my concern.
I was wondering if Lisa or Andrea could clarify if the general plan needs to be updated for SB nine implementation?
Try to answer that. Andrea, if you would like, and then if you have anything to follow up on, please feel free in in light of that maybe you and the and the MIG might have spoken about this. But the general plan, as 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 we, as some of us know, is currently being updated right now with respect to the current housing element cycle and the need to plan for a minimum of 2,735 new units to the year 2031. As we identify sites in the housing element update process, those sites need to be able to accommodate that figure. But we're not zoning for, we're not, we're not only, excuse me, sorry about that. Sorry about that. Oh, there we go. And we're not, we're not basically only changing the zoning designation for sites to meet the need. We're we're doing, we're taking a comprehensive approach whereby one particular zoning district will be updated, of course, to accommodate the additional housing need, but also so that all parcels can equally be upzoned or with increases in the number of stories for consistency. So we're not doing any spot zoning just for the 2,735 new units. We're taking a comprehensive approach. And so through that process, we will be looking at build-out, overall residential build-out based upon the modifications that have been made to the zoning ordinance and will factor in the the SB nine units as well. So we're going to be taking a look at this comprehensively for the EIR that will be done as part of the housing element update.
And through the chair, if I could just add to that a little bit more. As Lisa mentioned, this will be done as part of the housing element update, but to sort of reverse it, the housing element update does not have to be done in order for the SB nine units to, for the city to approve those. So one of the requirements of the state, and this is similar to when the ADU laws changed a few years ago, is really to remove barriers to people building units. And so in this case, the the, you know, if someone were to apply for an SB nine unit, we wouldn't have to wait until that housing element was done in order to process that.
As a novice in this area, I would have to agree with what Andrea just said. In other jurisdictions, I I mean, this is required by law. And so it doesn't, even if your general plan doesn't say it specifically in its language to acknowledge the new law, it still is accommodate, you know, you still have to accommodate the new law. And so, and it doesn't necessarily mean that it radically changes too many assumptions about your housing units or your capacity or your jobs, you know, it, because you may or may not want to make assumptions about how many of those units will come about. So that sounds right. Are there any other questions from committee members or planning commissioners? No? Okay. Hearing none. I think it's time then to take questions and comments from the public. And then we can go back to comments and discussion by the community members and commissioners, if that sounds good. So with that, we'd like to ask, invite any members of the public who would like to comment. And I see it's already started in the Q and A. But to please feel free to raise your hand on Zoom or to to call in and dial star nine to raise your hand. And we're happy to hear your comments, thoughts and questions. I do not see any hands raised on the attendees on Zoom. Are there any attendees on the phone who are raising their hands?
Are we able to put up the call number?
That would be helpful. Thank you. If Mukul could stop sharing for just a minute.
Yeah, if I can share my screen, I can bring up the presentation again.
Thank you. Great. And so, oops, I think I'm gonna need to, let me apologize. I think this is at the end. Let me, let me stop share and queue it up accordingly. Give me one minute here.
Thank you, Lisa.
Madam Chair, this is Laura Stetson. While she's doing that, I just, I'm looking for some clarification that in a comment that's in in Q and A from Ms. Kathy Baird. She says yes to SB nine units, and I'm assuming she is in favor of SB nine units is what that comment means. So Ms. Baird, if you could just confirm that in the Q and A, that would be great. Or if you want to be recognized.
I think it was under the answered tab where Kathy first said, I hope we don't keep the eight hundred square foot limits in the Birmingham standards for SB nine units.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And while Lisa's pulling up the number, great. So, thank you. So if any members of the public would like to call in or raise your hands here, please call one six six nine nine zero zero six eight three three and enter the meeting ID eight nine zero zero three seven two three three six three. If you would like to make a public comment on agenda item five A, objective design standards and SB now, SB nine, now is the time to speak. Skipping back down, if you'd like to virtually raise your hand, you can click on the raise the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you are joining by phone, please press star nine. And then when you're called upon, please press star six to unmute. I see one attendee with his hand raised, David Crabbe. You are free to talk.
Hey, good evening. This is very difficult to deal with because you're so general. It's very hard to respond to it. When you get more specifics in there, it is going to be much more easier, like you were starting to do with the SB nine stuff, but it wasn't enough information for me to read what they're, what to respond to. But what I suggest, and I think it was suggested at the previous ones, is that you need a lot more visuals, photographs of houses that you like, buildings that you like, houses that you like, things that you would think respect or reflect the community character that we have. And I think if you had a lot more of those and let people start rating them, you might have a lot better chance of getting some response to it. Because right now I can't respond. Everything is so general. I have nothing to respond to, really. I can, you know, opine on SB nine. I agree that eight hundred square foot maximum is not, not correct. We, there was supposed to be a, it's an eight hundred minimum in the state code. It could, why not, can't the units be bigger than that? Take one three thousand square foot house, split it in half, this is two duplexes, and you've got two fifteen hundred square foot units. A lot of other issues like that. I'm looking forward to seeing the SB nine specifics and so I can respond to them. But more visuals, that's what you need. These, seeing what people like and what they don't like, I think will help you a lot in terms of figuring out where to go from here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe. Are there any other callers who would like to comment or any other attendees on?
No further.
Staff, are there any callers? Okay. Thank you. Okay, great. And then I guess we will turn it back to commissioners and to committee members. And if Nicole would like to share his screen again, we can go back to the exercise by which he was capturing information and questions. Great.
Thank you. And just to, if I can just restate the, the two questions that we would love to hear your feedback is, number one, what do you think about the overarching elements of all neighborhoods? Either they are common to all neighborhoods or unique to certain neighborhoods? And the feedback that we have heard so far from the community is they would like the neighborhood overarching element to be safe, well-connected, family-friendly, have a diversity of design, make sure it works for people, incorporate views, and in addition, the developments that encourage walkability be green and flexible. And then the other set of questions have got to do with individual building and open space elements, be it tree-lined sidewalks, front yards, different types of entry elements, including porches, entrances, balconies, design of side and backyards. What should building shapes and sizes be? And then also your feedback on materials and colors, in addition to any other general comments or questions that you may have. So with that, I'm going to actually go back to the first question, which is to hear your feedback. Is, if you agree with what we have heard from the community so far in terms of the overarching neighborhood elements, include things such as safety, being well-connected, family-friendly, so on and so forth.
Great. Who would, who would like to start off? Do we like these priorities? Do we have thoughts about other ones? I see Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Clements. I don't have any additional ones to add. For me, if I had to look at, if I were to try to rate these, I really like the idea of diverse design flexibility and design, allowing the homeowner to do a modification or build a home that has meaning to them. And I see that in San Carlos now, and I'd, I'd like to see that be able to continue. I also like the idea of a walk, of a walkable neighborhood. Many, many people, some of them with dogs, some of them are just walking. They walk by my house or through the neighborhood every day. I do that, too. I really like that idea. So those, for me, are some of the ones that bubble to the top. Walkable, flexible, diverse design. I would say for me, those are the most important ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Committee member Sakai, would you like to go next?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Perhaps it's because I share a committee position with Ellen Garvey, but I also agree with a lot of her comments about San Carlos's approach to discretionary design review. I think it, compared to a lot of other jurisdictions in which my firm practices architecture, San Carlos is probably one of the most flexible when it comes to allowing for individual homeowner and, and by extension, architectural expression. There are far fewer prescriptive standards in San Carlos than in a lot of neighboring cities. There's a lot more, there's a lot more, I think, openness to different styles and diversity of styles here. And I would, I would, I would like to see that maintained through even objective standards that, that would get adopted is, is maintaining that approach to flexibility in design and expression. And, and many of my comments on the, the draft standards had to do with not sort of tying down architects and homeowners from being expressive. Because I think that's actually one of the strengths of San Carlos, having sat on that, that committee now for almost four years. I see a lot of diversity of design that you don't really see in other cities. And I think it's largely because of the, the non-prescriptive nature, the fact that there aren't, you know, very specific design guidelines, et cetera. I think that actually contributes to a lot of, a lot of character with each design. By the same token, I think there are overarching goals that are worthwhile to strive for. Walkability is certainly one, and I think the new RS six ordinance promotes that with the, the ability to do a single car garage with the two-car driveway, reducing the emphasis of a, reducing the emphasis on the automobile and promoting less of a building's front elevation to a garage door, I think is, is great. And I think furthermore, San Carlos is probably one of the only jurisdictions where porch is mandated. And I really have appreciated that ever since I've done residential buildings in San Carlos, that, that porch requirement has been there. And that's pretty unique, and I like that. And I think porches and minimized garage presence are, are one of the two things that can be codified that would promote walkable neighborhoods over time. And I think building by building, project by project, San Carlos has been getting there for a decade or more, at least as long as I've been doing business here. So I think a lot of what is great about San Carlos is captured in, in some of these, but the ones, the ones that I'm most fond of are the ones I just mentioned.
Great. Thank you. Other thoughts or comments on the overarching elements? And we can always jump into the individual elements and come back to the overarching elements if that helps with the conversation, too.
I have comments, but I'd like to give Commissioner Bradley or committee member Datwani opportunity to go as well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Don.
Is it my turn?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Dice Chair. Now I've forgotten what I was gonna say. Not really, no. So many things to say here. I just wanted to compliment both the San Carlos planning staff and MIG, our consultants in this project. You've done a tremendous job here with the community communications and the workshop and putting this all together in a little document, twenty pages, beautiful. Usually we're reading two hundred pages for every meeting on projects and all that. But you've done a great job. I read every word of it and I loved it. And thank you, both to the staff and the consultants. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Community member Datwani?
Hi, I have maybe a question before I have a comment. I see that the one of the first, one of the first, the most important, I guess, criteria was safety. People voted for a safe neighborhood, I guess, the elements of neighborhood for safety. And when we're speaking about safety, I guess I was reading packet page twenty-three and about entrances. And I guess my question is, is part of the, the reason the requirement is to have a visible entry facing the street for safety? Is that where this is, where that, because there's a lot of language around the entry, the entry feature, the height and the parameters of the entry, the porch? And I guess I, I, I am curious to know if that is also due to the safety factor of neighborhoods, if that's been proven to create more safety in neighborhoods. And that is also a priority of mine to have a safe neighborhood as I live in the community and I, I'm hoping to raise children here. And, and so I guess that is a big question that I have.
Thank you. Would, would MIG like to comment on that?
Sure. I, 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 I'll start and then maybe Laura and others can contribute to it. So yes, the short answer is yes, in terms of, there is a very clear correlation when buildings have doors and windows that open onto the public right away, like a street or even a public open space like a park. It, it, it directly contributes to what is known as eyes on the street. So you know, there are more and more opportunities for the buildings to actively engage, even if they're not people looking in the building onto the street. They do provide that opportunity that anytime, anything that is happening in the street, for example, will be noticed by people who live in the buildings in the single-family residential units. So by clearly demarcating and showing that, yes, anybody who's using the public open space like the roadway is being watched by clearly identified articulated windows and doors in the, in the building that is looking onto the street does contribute to the safety of the street. And then as a result, overall also helps contribute to the overall sense of safety of the neighborhood, too. There has been also correlation show that when people turn their backs or buildings turn their backs, or you have fences that are ten, twelve feet high and the people are not engaged with what's happening with the street or the buildings are not, that starts to have a detrimental effect on the overall safety of the street and the neighborhood at large.
You see. Thank you.
Did you have a comment you wanted to make also before we?
I think I, I agree with the elements and I also appreciate the architectural diversity that is currently happening in San Carlos. I, I have seen some really interesting and creative cutting-edge design coming through the PRC and I'm very excited about it. And I think for me, the diverse design will also create more interesting diverse neighborhoods, which will also create more, I guess, like a well-connected community and an open community, especially for growing families, young growing families like myself. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could chime in, actually on that point, one of the reasons I like San Carlos a lot is because of the diversity of product. I grew up in suburbia tract homes and I ran as far away as I could, as soon as I could, as, you know, and moved after college to cities because they had such a greater diversity of types of places to look at, to live in. I, so that's always been one of the things that I like about San Carlos, that it's not cookie cutter and that it's also not a place where it's like a strict condo board kind of feel when you come to the city, where you have to like, you know, only be one or two kinds of designs. For instance, that is not a desirable kind of community feel for me. But, you know, overall, communities have to be safe. And so I actually think our small lot size really helps with that because our windows and doors are right there almost around the street, and that's, that's a good thing. So I like that, the more compact development patterns, which means also more walkable. So that, those are all really important attributes to me as well. And whether you have small children in a stroller or you have a senior who's now in a wheelchair, the sidewalks and being able to get around and take walks on lovely evenings is really, that's what makes neighborhoods places that are home rather than, you know, kind of living in the middle of the big city and you're not sure what you're gonna encounter. So where you can relax more. I do not think views are mine forever or important, as important as like, I, I like changing, things changing over time. I do not think we should have vested views once we buy that nothing's ever allowed to change. I really, really don't believe that personally. So those are my thoughts.
Great. Commissioner, did you want to also share some of the comments that we heard from the community? Or would you like me to do it?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. In the chat.
Yes.
Yes. I'm happy to. David Crabbe made a couple of comments about walkability with wide continuous sidewalks that are continuous and feel safe with street trees that are welcoming. Love the street trees. And then undergrounding of street utilities, which I think would be fantastic. I agree. Wholeheartedly, I actually have a transformer view in my backyard, not my favorite. So would love to have undergrounding personally. And then there's some more on SB nine, so maybe we can come back to that.
Great. So maybe this is an opportunity, if you agree, Commissioner, to jump onto the individual comments or individual design elements areas, starting with maybe the tree-lined sidewalks that all, some of you have already started. starting with maybe the tree-lined sidewalks that all some of you have already started to talk about. Any thoughts about having that as an integral part of design standards as as this process continues with developing objective design standards?
Yeah, I think we've heard that from a couple of people. Again, the other comments were about shade, protection of mature trees, ensuring driver sightlines and ADA access from the community meeting. Would any commissioners or committee members like to chime in on this? Oh, yes, Commissioner Garvey, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair Clemens. Just to, this may be an opportunity to add on. The use of gray water i- is is was a good suggestion made by at the last workshop. And the use of gray water can be really beneficial, not only in landscaping, but if people are planting trees. I also want to support the the new tree ordinance that was just adopted. And there are many native trees that are on that that don't require lots of water. So I I support the idea of trees if they are, you know, low water and can be, where applicable, watered using gray water. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on street trees, tree-lined sidewalks? Yes, committee member that Wani?
Hi, I actually think tree-lined sidewalks are they're they're a nice to have and not a necessity only because we have sat, we have many streets here and I live on on one of them where we don't have a sidewalk. And for me, I think it's more of a pri- priority to keep the keep the safety of the streets. I mean, if we added the sidewalks and the trees and we made it mandatory, then it would actually make our streets even smaller, making it even more dangerous to walk on the streets. And also, if you did make trees mandatory, then it would encroach on our property lines, which a lot of the properties with on these narrow streets already have difficulty having a fifteen to twenty-foot driveway. And I think per property owner, it should be, it should be a choice. And also that at the it should also be the safety of the property and the environment at the forefront of this type of decision. But it is definitely, I I enjoy having streets that are lined with maple trees and they're beautiful. But it is not, I I feel that it's not, it's a nice to have and not a, it shouldn't be mandatory.
Actually, with that comment, if I could clarify with MIG or staff, is there a way to create the objective design standards so that we could refer to minimum, you know, kind of conditional requirements? Per Heyang's comment about the street widths being sufficient, that, you know, if the street width were already, you know, of a particular width, therefore you would be able to have room for the street trees, then street trees would be either required or desirable. Is it possible to, is desirable not an okay concept under the objective design standards?
Commissioner Clemens, if I could weigh in on that is we've been working with a lot of attorneys as we've done objective design standards that really the the metric is can two reasonable people agree on what that standard says? And if if there's room for interpretation, that might cause us a little bit of heartburn. But I think what we would need to look at is your public works department may have standards already as to how and where to put in street, street trees. The difference between being the street tree within the right-of-way area versus trees in front yards and should there be a requirement where there's not adequate parkway width? That a somebody, if they're developing a new home or redeveloping, are they required to put a street tree in the front yard if there are not boulevard trees? So I I I hear this dot one is concerns that there may be some standards in in place today that we need to take a look at. And I I don't know if Andrea can can answer that.
If I may just add to that discussion, Laura and Andrea, I think I I think both the observations are very valuable. And it's, I think, the fine balancing act where you do put the trees only if you have the right amount of space. I think a key critical thing is also looking at trees that, you know, provide that permeability and don't start becoming like walls that hinder the safety and the visual access that the doors and windows provide. One thing I would like to point out, which has also been our experience where we have seen street trees is they also do contribute to traffic calming. So if you do have trees in the planting area, they lead to slower speeds, especially on neighborhood streets. So that's just something else to keep in mind as part of the overall safety framework is to make sure that people are not speeding on local residential streets.
And I can just, I can just add to, so there are definitely standards in place by Public Works for for what they consider as street trees. But you know, kind of going off of Vice Chair Clemens' comment, right now, in terms of, of, you know, desirable and and kind of the language that needs to be used, right now, our code talks about, you know, single-family homes having a street-oriented tree, which, you know, a year ago to me seemed pretty right? But as I'm learning more and more, I mean, it's it's really not. We have people who think it means, you know, it should be between the sidewalk and street. We have people who thinks it just needs to be in the front yard. I mean, there's like eight different, right, interpretations we get. And so I think the key really through this and why we're also starting with the importance of the design elements and the overarching desires of the community is to to figure out how to numerically or objectively get to what we want that that meets those, you know, desires and elements that we want. So, yeah, I just wanted to add that.
Somewhere between the house and the road, that means somewhere. I will just say again about street trees, I because the area is getting hotter every year. I find myself not wanting to go outside if I cannot be in shade. And so I I personally find it more and more important. And my trees are doing worse because of the drought. So I I think this is really, for me, personally, very important for wanting to be outside. Thanks. So we are going on to the front yards portion of our show.
Vice Chair Clemens, I do see that Commissioner Bradley has his physical hand raised. It's hard to see, but
Thank you. I'm having a hard time. His Zoom title is directly across his face and his body. So it's really impossible to see. Sorry about that, Commissioner Bradley. Would you like to comment before we go on?
Please, just back to details in the yards. The state has said in SB nine, I believe, that we can reduce the side yards and rear yards to four feet. And people have been complaining when they come to RDRC that five feet isn't enough because of privacy and fresh air and things like that. I noticed a lot of comments of the people on workshop number one that they wanted to put a garden in their side yard and plant some trees and and privacy shrubs, that sort of thing. You can't do that in four feet, even four feet and five feet on the other side. My God, that's nine feet. Is that it? And and no backyards. You can build up to four feet of your rear property line. So is there a way in these design standards that we might be able to get it back to five feet instead of four feet? Or can we resist the state that much? Thank you. Does anybody know if we can make changes like that? Since we're doing design standards?
Through the trail, go ahead and and answer that. So my understanding with both SB nine and ADU state laws, the city really doesn't have a lot of flexibility to make things more restrictive in terms of setbacks. So in this case, more restrictive would be requiring a bigger setback than four feet. On the laws themselves, especially the ADU, do talk about the types of units that apply to. So for example, an ADU that's less than sixteen feet in height can, we can't require greater than a a four-foot setback. However, if someone was to propose an ADU on the second floor, for example, of a house, then we could require greater than that that number. So the quick answer is really no, we can't change that for the units that are specifically called out in the state laws. For people proposing some sort of variation of that, there is some flexibility. But but not for the ones that do meet the the minimum requirements under state law.
Well, and I would add that I have a pretty narrow side yard and have planted shade-loving blinds. There are fruit trees in my neighbor's yards on the side. I mean, you could not room for a big, flat-out garden, but there are things that one can grow.
That is correct.
In a small area.
I think there's
Thank you.
Make a comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. So talking about front yards, I'll just point out in the chat that there is a point about SB nine that it would result in flag lots more often and that, you know, homes would be placed with narrow driveways along the side of the front house back to a second house, which would therefore, you know, you wouldn't necessarily see that back house very much from the front, the visual impact of the additional unit from the street is potentially minimized. So thank you for that. Mr. Crab, so as we talk about front yards, gray water irrigation was noted for landscaping in the last item. And I wanted to note that that is also very interesting as our, you know, water, to me, water wise gardens and plantings. So other things that were noted in the workshops were front yard sized for kids play, family-friendly design, maintain landscapes, sustainable landscaping. Would any commissioners or committee members like to comment further? Well, I could offer another thought and then folks could tea, could chime in. The I do think that especially as homes, you know, could always get larger on the in the on the parcel, right? Without some constraints, it is possible for people to build all the way, you know, or very close to the front sidewalk. I do think that it is important to maintain some kind of front yard. I think that under state law, it is possible for people to use the front yard space actually to park their units. So we can't dictate necessarily the the use of the entire front yard, I don't believe. But I think the point is well-received by the public comments that if what we want to do is encourage a family-friendly city here, that means that there should be some space or a little bit of space anyway for a dog to run around or a child to run around. And that promoting that use in the front yard does, again, bring more eyes to the street and a more safe and welcoming kind of neighborhood where you can interact more with your neighbor. So I am in favor of that and have been enjoying sitting out with my neighbors in their front yards and side yards just since COVID hit. So I feel like people have been using their front yards much more and interacting more than even two years ago. So I think this is a smart design aspect.
And in turn, it also then, the more you use your front yard in some ways, it also helps with the overall safety and that the residents are invested in their neighborhoods.
Yes, right. And then they know who that person is who usually sits over there on the front. Yeah. Right. Any other commissioners or committee members comments? Or McCool, were you going to say something?
No, I I was saying, do we need to move to porches, entrances if there were no comments on the front yards? I will take silence. Is it fair, Commissioner, to take silence as agreement?
I see Commissioner Bradley so much better than I did. Thank you for whomever did whatever they did. I see his hand raised. Would you like to comment, Commissioner?
Me again? Okay. I just hate to see twenty feet pavement to park two cars in a front yard when the lot might only be forty feet or maybe fifty feet. Why? Those are small lots. You're taking up half of it, nearly half of it to park two cars. And I know I'm guilty of this because I have three cars for two of us and I either have to park in the street or pay to park my car that I don't use much. It's a collector car. At least I've had it for forty-four years. I can't leave it out in the street very well because people throw eggs on it. I just don't like to see that. I like, I want green front yards, not concrete front yards. Is my overall comment on that. Thank you.
McCool, just as a side note on Commissioner Bradley's comment there is that we do through the code have the ability to indicate how much previous surface there can be in a front yard.
Yes. And we also need to meet the C three requirements that all new dwellments require in some ways, not everywhere, but.
C three being permeability and groundwater recharge and stormwater capture.
That is correct.
Right. And I was going to say that, of course, we could use permeable pavers or some other materials if somebody needs to park a car in the front. I have to agree with Commissioner Bradley. It's not desirable necessarily for aesthetics to park in the front yard. However, I do think that sometimes it is a necessity. As so, for instance, my my house has no driveway. And so if I, and I have a one-car garage that you enter off of the back alleyway. It's a very common design in many urban areas and I like it because I don't see garage. You know, when you look at the house, I just see house. So and our side yard was too narrow to run the driveway from the front all the way to the backyard. So it wouldn't fit. So therefore I must park on the street. And Dawn, if I had a collector car like yours, I would have no choice but to park it in somehow in my front yard. So or somewhere. But anyway, so sometimes it's not possible. Also, I want to add that if, for instance, I own a home, but I need to, for financial reasons, rent out a room to someone and do home share or again, build an ADU in the backyard, I might have to allow or want to allow someone to park in a portion of my front yard so that I will make it more marketable. So it's not desirable, but sometimes I think it might be necessary. And if it's done with the permeable pavers, perhaps there's a way that we could allow it if it were over to the side or something, if it were not like plum center, you know, like I I don't know what other communities have done regarding this. Because again, I do believe that with ADU state laws, you can't you can't say no because there's no parking and you can't prevent someone from parking in the front is my understanding in order to service the ADU.
And Ms. Clemens, that one thing that we would want to take a look at in a And, uh, Ms. Clements, that one thing that we would want to take a look at in a situation like yours, is there any restriction that if you have access to the rear, um, via an alley, do your current codes even allow, um, uh, another curb or allow a curb cut if there is parking from the rear? So that's another consideration that we'll look into.
Oh.
Right. Meaning it's not a through lot where you can have access from both sides. There might be a requirement you can, uh.
Right, right. And I guess one other point is that we I, I don't want to prohibit that kind of design um, from happening. Uh, you know, and so I want to be able to allow those garages off of a back alleyway or a, you know, road behind if the conditions allow. I do think it, um, it really adds space to the yard in different ways. So, um, and I haven't found it any problem to park on the street, which is where I park where I live. So, um, Commissioner Garvey has her hand up.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Clements. And just to build on that, on that point, at, at the RDRC, we, we pretty often hear comments from neighbors, especially where there's a, a home that is proposed that's on a, a, a narrow street, a tight street, a street that just doesn't have a lot of available parking. Um, there's a concern from the neighbors that if, if the new homeowners are going to park a lot of cars on the street, uh, that's a concern. So having space to allow them to get two cars off the street um, is generally, uh, encouraged by the neighbors. And if the homeowner is able to do it using a permeable surface, then they're able to meet the code. Um, and that can be, uh, in many, many times, a good compromise, uh, in, in, uh, sort of ensuring that the new homeowner will get two cars off the street because there is sufficient room, uh, to park them. So that's, while I like the idea of, of trees, the reality is that every home, instead of having one or 1.5 cars, now has at least two and, and trying to get two of them off the street, um, seems a good idea.
Uh, if, if I can just, I, I think what that Commissioner also brings to the point is inherent flexibility and to think of all our open spaces, they are used differently on different times of the day. So during the day, maybe something that the kids will play, but in the evening, it may be something that the cars are parked. So the, you know, so they, they begin to serve different things, or you may have a barbecue or something like that. So I think thinking of the front yards as, as flexible, permeable, open spaces that serve different needs is something we can definitely keep into account. I am going to request in the interest of time for us to go ahead with the discussion on poaches and entrances and balconies and other similar elements. I think we did hear uh, from the initial questions and comments that um, it's something distinctive that the city of San Carlos has a porch requirement. So thoughts on that?
Yes, committee member Dot Moni.
The porch area in front of the entrance, is it required that it needs to be covered? I'm sorry, I didn't read. I didn't, I, I, I read the, um, the guidelines, but I didn't, I didn't see that in there. If it's, if the porch, the entire porch needs to be covered?
Uh, so sure. So I can go ahead and answer that. Um, currently, our code requires at least a forty-square-foot porch. Um, that could be either a projection or recessed. Um, so that, that does most of the time, um, require some sort of covering, roof covering. Um, there is, however, an exception to that, um, like if, if it doesn't, um, match with the design and there's some other welcoming entry feature. So that could be like landscaping or something like that. But, but the intent of it really is to have this focal point that's the entrance of the house. Um, so I would say, you know, nine times out of ten, yes, there's a roof and, and it's, you know, meeting this numerical requirement.
So my next question is, um, thank you for answering that. Um, my next question is, can you enclose the front porch?
So, so a couple of things. Um, we would count that currently under our code, we would count that as floor area. Um, so it would go towards, you know, our maximum floor area calculations and all of that. Um, if a porch were fully enclosed, I don't think we would then count it as a porch. I haven't, I think there might be some architectural styles where that, you know, there are the enclosed porches. We haven't really seen that too much, um, but that's definitely something, um, you know, that could be looked at. I think, I think the practice, though, has been to count those as, you know, living area, even if it's not necessarily habitable.
Okay, I guess my, my question, I guess, was, is leading to my comment about, um, you know, I loving the diversity of, of the architecture and, um, the, the, um, flexibility that we're allowed. And if, um, the entrances are required to be a certain, um, I guess, like a, a specific way and the porches are, um, defined and in, um, a very specific way, that maybe that would take away from the creativity of, um, of other designers and architects. That was my only comment.
Thank you for that. Other commissioners or committee members? I have one, um, quick comment, which is, um, to the extent that the porch is an indication of, um, eyes to the street and a welcoming on entryway, I also agree um, with committee member Dot Moni that so, for instance, we have a courtyard up front, um, very pertinent and very common in the Mediterranean style. We also have a little covered entryway. And for some reason, this had been built with a, um, with no covering on the entryway and just an opening to a courtyard. I would also think that that would serve many of the same purposes as, um, as a porch would. So, um, I would suggest that might be a reasonable alternative as well. Um, committee member Sakai?
Um, thank you. My, uh, question on the porches is not related to this specific page, but, um, I think rather on the, the draft objective standards, uh, I think I noticed that there was a restriction on, um, let's see, I think it's on packet page twenty three? Yeah, twenty-three, uh, near the top where it talks about entrances, um, shall not exceed ten feet in height. And I think, I think that might be overly restrictive, uh, with regard to porches. If you consider that the, the plate height of a porch would need to be at least eight feet tall and probably at least one foot above grade. Um, that doesn't leave really any room for, um, roof slope below that ten-foot height. Um, so I know that would be a challenge to design, um, a traditional-looking porch with only a ten-foot maximum height. So I think the idea of porch is as great as long as the latitude is provided to design a, a nice one.
We can definitely look into that and make sure that is addressed.
Thank you for that. Do you have any other comments, Eugene?
Uh, I ha- I actually have, um, probably about a dozen to fifteen other comments along those specific lines, uh, on packet pages twenty-two through twenty-four, but I just not sure if this is the right forum in which to air those because they're, they're very specific and small, kind of like that. And, and, and more kind of thinking from an architect's perspective on, um, kind of to my point earlier about encouraging good design while being flexible in that encouragement so that latitude is afforded to homeowners and architects to do good design. And, and so I'm not sure if I should wait because they're, they're pretty specific. I don't want to bore or take up this group's time with all of these, this laundry list that I've come up with.
Um, so through the chair, I can, I can, um, talk about that a little bit. And, um, committee member Sakai, uh, I actually was gonna mention that, and I, I mentioned before that this is, you know, an ongoing process. And so we're welcoming comments at any point. Um, so along those lines, you know, if it is something that you, you know, want to email over to staff, we can make sure they're incorporated and incorporate them in the minutes as well. Um, not to say, you know, you're absolutely welcome to, to share them now, but that, that is an option uh, as well. And, um, you know, I think one thing that, that's really um, become clear as we're going through this and, and, you know, one reason why personally I'm very grateful to have MIG on board is it's, as we talk about all this, um, it's really hard to, I think, objectively talk about design and, and what looks good. And so hearing this feedback in the comments, um, from everyone, um, makes sense. And so as I'm listening to, um, you know, describing, for example, um, Vice Chair Clements about the courtyard area, I'm trying to think, okay, well, how would we put that in objective standards? Like, if you could have a courtyard, if it complements the style of the house. I don't know if that's objective enough, right? So it's, it's, it's really interesting. And I think any feedback we get from, from any of you, whether it's very specific, like on the SB nine standards or more general, is really gonna help us fine-tune this and, and, and drill down. So, um, there, so long answer, but there is the option, um, committee member Sakai, if you'd like to to send over the comments, we'll make sure they're included too.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think I will avail myself of that opportunity. I think that's probably a better use of this group's time, but I think for the record, I, I wanted to, as the, as we've gotten deeper into the weeds on this discussion tonight, I, I wanted to amplify a comment I made earlier at the outset, which is, um, although I feel this is a very worthwhile venture or, or, um, effort, you know, to, to sort of put these standards in place, I, I question whether we're ever gonna be able to use these, given the restrictive nature of how we're limiting SB nine development to eight hundred square-foot units. Um, you know, I, I was part of an earlier discussion, joint meeting with the Planning Commission also, where we started discussing this very issue. And I think one of the comments was, you know, how do we encourage densification of neighborhoods in an orderly way? And I, I fear that the tact that's been taken here, the tact that's been taken here is one where we're not gonna see SB nine applications simply because you can do a larger building under the current RS six and RS three, I believe, zoning, um, with this eight hundred square-foot de facto restriction. So there's sort of a major economic disincentive to use SB nine, um, similar to what, um, anti-growth cities such as Los Altos Hills and Woodside and, and other jurisdictions have put in place, um, which I think go against the spirit of, and the intent of SB nine in particular. Because, um, you know, as you pointed out in your staff report, you've had twelve to fifteen inquiries about SB nine projects and, and no applications as yet. And quite frankly, if I owned a property in San Carlos or was an architect for a client in San Carlos, I would say that, yeah, this is not the way to go because you're not, you're not promoting the highest and best use of your land here because of the, the square-footage restrictions. So you know, I, I think this is great that we're doing this, but I, I really wonder, um, you know, after these standards are implemented and put in place, um, are we ever gonna see any SB nine applications unless the state, the state comes down on San Carlos and says, all right, city of San Carlos, you're not implementing, uh, SB nine in the way which, the way it would, way it was, way in which it was intended. So here you go. We're gonna rewrite your ordinance for you. So, uh, that's my little soapbox diet on, on the events of this evening.
And also, if I could clarify, um, you know, and, and again, we have these like two initiatives going on and they're overlapping. These overall objective design standards that we're talking about now are not just for SB nine. So they would also apply to single-family, um, single families with ADUs. Um, we are going to use what we can from this to kind of plug into SB nine. Um, and the, the standards that are listed on packet page twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four are specific to SB nine currently. Um, but we're anticipating, you know, there's currently several laws besides SB nine, like the Housing Accountability Act, which will require us to use these standards for single-family homes, um, all the way up to, you know, multifamily, um, as well. So, um, it is important to get the SB nine feedback, but I also just wanted to, um, you know, clarify that this is gonna apply to every single-family home in the city potentially, right? Depending on what's being proposed at, at, at some point or the other.
Great, okay. So you're offering essentially a homeowner two pathways for approval, one in which they can use the objective standards that are on twenty, pages twenty-two to twenty-four, uh, and just sort of go through a, a compliance approach. Or if they want to deviate from that, they could opt into the RDRC pathway.
And, and I would even drill down a little bit more than that, that the ones on the packet page twenty-two to twenty-four are only for SB nine. So, so taking SB nine out of it, there's two paths, either comply with whatever the objective standards are or end up being in the future. Or if not, then go through the, the RDRC path. And again, this applies right now. Um, it doesn't apply to every project that comes in, but, you know, we're anticipating as we get more and more um, directives from the state that there's gonna be less and less discretionary, um, review we have, right? So I, I wouldn't be surprised if in the future we have odds for single-family homes as to, you know, as well, not just single-family homes with ADUs. So,
Right.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Trying to put the RDRC out of business, is that what I heard? The state is.
I think we'll still get applications with people wanting to do.
We will too. I think we will always be needed. And I think, um, committee member Sakai will never be allowed to step down. I'm sorry, because he has a list full of thirteen of quick reactions as soon as he sees something, which means he's an amazing professional. Thank you for being here. Um, Commissioner Garvey, would you like to go?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Vice Chair Clements. I wanted to, uh, echo and support, um, the, the comment that was made by, by Eugene regarding porch heights. One of the things that I've heard a fair amount of in my year on the RDRC is um, sort of a de-emphasis on garages. And, and so when you de-emphasize the garage by either shrinking its size from a two-car to a one gar- car, um, the focus shifts somewhere else. And I've noticed that it's shifting more and more to the front door, whether that's the front door size, the front door materials, the front door design, the front door side light, and the porch. So I think now that that has sort of replaced the garage, if you will, as the focal point of the front of the house, it's important that it be scaled right so that when it is the focal point, it, it physically is the focal point. And so I think, um, Eugene's comment is, is well-taken and that a little bit more height might help everybody shift their emphasis and their focus away from the garage and to another part of the home. Thank you.
You for that. And, um, we're continuing to get comments in the chat, and I guess I will just ask MIG to make note of the comments as they put the mural board together. I know this is a difficult item to, um, know, as the commenter said early. Um, everything you'd like to say early on as a member of the public. So, um, we're happy to take feedback, um, in this way as, uh, the thoughts come. So thank you to MIG and staff for incorporating that into the, into the feedback. I think, uh, is it time to move on to the next topic?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And we're talking about side and backyards. So, uh, some notes here, I think, from both comments and the chat and then other items, um, that people have already noted this evening. Anyone like to comment about that? Side and backyards. Uh, privacy light, ventilation, well-used gardens, secured micro mobility storage. Is that what I heard? From the community meeting?
Yes.
Good, um.
That means a place to put your bike.
It does, or your scooter.
Scooter.
That will not get stolen, which we see on Nextdoor, you know, in different neighborhoods, in different cities.
Sure.
Um, not uncommon.
Any thoughts on side yards, um, or even backyards? I know, we also heard from a lot of community members the need to have a fine balancing act between the design between the desire to create privacy for the new development, but also respect the privacy of the adjoining development where possible. And that's where I think so. And there was a long, lot of talk about, um, trying to ensure there is light and ventilation, both for the new development as well as maintaining it for the adjoining established development. Did we capture the thoughts?
Yes, um, committee member Datwani, would you like to comment?
Yes, I have a question that I think will lead into a comment as well. To understand the SB nine, um, with a little more clarity, um, I think there was a, um, a slide in the last meeting that said it was something like four, four feet setbacks from the sides. Is, is that, um, and then also, um, if that is, if that is, um, if the setback is four feet, um, is there how, um, the people can get to the backyard or to get to, um, the entrance of the SB nine units or the new property? I guess I don't quite understand how, um, how the property, the property would be, like, um, divided into like eight hundred square feet and then access to that eight hundred square foot property. And I, and so without that knowledge, it's hard for me to understand what the setbacks would even be or the language around it. So I guess that's my question and comment.
With that for MIG, yeah, please Nicole.
Yes, so the four foot, uh, mandate of the state does allow for having an access. Suppose you're developing, I'm just speaking hypothetically. Suppose you're developing the additional units in the rear and, you know, there's a big backyard space. Or for example, let's just say there's a big backyard space where the applicant is thinking of developing the additional SB nine units out there. The four foot does provide a desirable, I would, or a feasible access to go to the new units that are in the back. And a lot of our, um, developments, for example, that have ADU or just other units, they do allow. Now, it doesn't make better sense in terms of, uh, design. As an architect, I would say to have a wider, something more than four, because four is, is tight. But would you like to provide like five feet where you're providing a little bit of a landscaped area or make it six feet? Yes, it would be more desirable and more welcoming experience to have something wider than four, but four is adequate to provide access.
And, um, uh, Ms. Datwani, for, for clarification, the eight hundred square feet is for the unit? Andrea, does the draft code set a twelve hundred square foot minimum lot size for any newly created lot?
Correct. So, um, if you were to subdivide under SB nine, the minimum lot size would be, um, twelve hundred square feet to do that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
Any other thoughts, um, and Commissioner Clemens, can we go to the next one? Just if folks don't have any comments on side and backyards?
That is fine with me. I, I do say for the record that I think I had noted at a previous meeting with the, I'm also in favor of liberalizing the eight hundred max square footed size on lots that, and maybe it's an FAR, um, calculation that, you know, have adequate size to accommodate a larger second unit. I don't see any other hands. So with that, and Dawn, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bradley's not waving at us. So that's fine. Let's move on to the next one.
So this has got to do more with the building shape and size. I think there was a very robust community feedback on this about, in general, people talked about maintaining the single family neighborhood look and feel with the additional infill development. And then making sure that, you know, the new developments were not boxy, but they were incorporating or stepping back, transitioning to existing adjoining single family development, and minimizing the impact of multi-unit or split lots, and emphasizing the, the scale, the right scale and size, uh, over the number of units. And then there was some discussion about prohibiting rooftop decks, keeping in mind the noise and fire concerns.
Thank you for that summary. Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Vice Chair Clemens. Just a couple of comments about setbacks at the RDRC meetings. There are oftentimes very robust and, and sometimes even tense discussions between the homeowner and their proposed project and, um, adjoining neighbors. And the use of setbacks has been really important to try to minimize the, the, the massiveness that some of the houses have. It, it shifts your eye a little bit. It provides some relief. And it, um, does away with that boxy look that is sometimes so unimaginative. The other thing that setbacks do is they try to address, um, the tension with second story windows where the homeowner may want more windows or larger windows because they want to view or they want more light. And the neighbor may want fewer windows, smaller windows because they fear privacy issues. So the idea of setbacks and how they're used is really important, especially I believe in San Carlos where many lots are like mine, small. I have three foot setbacks on my side because it's an older home, very tight, uh, two-story homes near me. So the use of, of setbacks, I, I'm not a designer. I don't know what the setbacks should be, but the idea of getting rid of the boxiness and incorporating setbacks into whatever the standards are, um, I think is important.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I see a comment in the chat about the importance of rooftop solar and making sure that, that that ability is not impeded. And I, I, I would second that importance. I know a lot of the homes in our area rate very, very highly for rooftop solar capacity. And I think it'll be more and more important for people to be able to, um, be reliant on maybe their own votable takes, um, if we have more outages. So I would second that, that desire, and I think setbacks do help with that, um, with casting a little bit less shade. Any other comments on building shape and size? Okay, moving on. Materials and colors, a new Tesla and solar roof material. Commenting from before. And Commissioner Garvey, would you like to build on that or add something?
Thank you, Vice Chair Clemens. I guess if I had to put it succinctly, I'd say higher quality materials look better and last longer. You can really tell, um, when someone wants to use in sort of a, a more inferior, uh, material. And, um, what's really encouraging is that what we see at the RDRC, the vast majority, people are, um, using high-quality materials, beautiful diversity, high-quality materials. And, um, that's just been wonderful to see. And in the one or two times when folks have decided they wanted to use something cheaper, I think they've gone back and done a, a, a little redesign just when they realized just how much better it all will look. They just spent a little bit more money on, um, one or two elements that, that weren't really up to speed. So I wholeheartedly support quality, um, materials in, in the building.
Committee Member Sakai?
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate the, this, um, this section on materials and colors. I think on, uh, pages twenty two to twenty four, uh, there's just a couple of things I, I wanted to highlight that you might want to look at the wording on a little bit. I think specifically on, on page twenty three, uh, there is a comment that, or there's a condition for, uh, basically a standard that says, all exterior building materials and color shall be the same for all units on the property. And then it goes into what those materials are, uh, stucco, brick, stone, in an earth tone color. And I was thinking about that from an architectural perspective. So if I had, say, a two-unit building, um, the way this is written, I would then be required to put the same materials on each unit in the same, kind of in the same palette, I guess. And that's not, I don't know if that, that makes a lot of sense. Sometimes, um, you might have an upper unit and a lower unit. You might want to have those in different materials or you actually might want to articulate the two units with different types of materials. And sometimes having, having the flexibility to do that, um, I think can actually, if, if, if well handled, can contribute to, to good design as opposed to prescribing that all units have to have the same palette of materials and then saying that they must be earth tone, et cetera. I think that might be a little bit restrictive. And I think similarly on materials, um, there's a, there's a point about window and door frame shall be one of three colors, basically black, white or earth tone. Find that to be a little bit restrictive too. I think, uh, you can find high-quality windows in a variety of colors, uh, forest green, uh, scarlet red, you know, dark bronze, there, there's just a lot of colors out there with regard to windows and doors that are beyond these, you know, these, these choices here. And, yeah, I think, I think the more, the more we get into prescribing what, um, you know, what things should be colored or what materials should be used and in what, you know, on what units and, and kind of on what surfaces, I think we run the risk of, of, of really tying the hands of, uh, someone capable who could come up with something, um, you know, really nice that doesn't fit these, these restrictions. And I'm not sure if these restrictions by themselves are actually promoting good design.
Thank you for that. Yes, committee member Datwani?
I also agree with committee, committee member Sakai's comments about the, um, the, the language and that, um, it shouldn't be very specific to what, which colors and color tones and, um, even the measurements of, um, like one inch in depth and, um, those type of things. If, if it was a bit more, um, if it was left to the designer to sort of, and the homeowner to come up with that and, um, in a, in, in their own creative way, it, it would be less restrictive as well.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Bradley, do you have any thoughts on this before I weigh in? I don't see a hand waving. Okay. I want to, uh, really agree with committee member Sakai. I think that the idea that we want to have a welcoming and diverse community actually is really hampered by dictating colors and certainly, and materials. As a homeowner, I would also like to be able to, um, purchase, if, it, to the extent that this addresses SB nine, there are a lot of options out there for, um, for ADUs that are not stick-built. And some of them are incredibly attractive and they may not look exactly like my home. But if I, um, and/or a design professional that I hired, um, you know, felt like it was compatible with my home, if not necessarily a carbon copy of the pad of the design, I would certainly want the latitude to go ahead and do what I want to on my own property. I don't live in a, you know, with an HOA, um, and part of the benefit is that I have more latitude about what to do with my own property. So, um, that said, you know, I, I know this is again with, um, per Andrea's comment, hard with your hat on of how you write that is a little harder to do. But I do think, um, to promote, uh, you know, recycled materials. And by the way, I mean, there are, um, we're close to San Francisco. We're close to other cities that have, you know, turn of the century Victorians, which are traditionally painted all kinds of crazy colors. I, I would love to see some of those colors in San Carlos, maybe not bright pink, but you know, like there's all kinds of palettes that are historically appropriate for eighteen nineties, um, buildings. So, um, and we have some eighteen nineties buildings here in turn of the century buildings here. So I really, really don't want everything to turn into, um, look-alikes and everything in earth tone. That said, I am painting my house beige, but as it's Mediterranean, it's, you know, it kind of goes, but you know, uh, if I had a different, if I had a, if I had a Victorian, I would not be, so. Those are my thoughts. Would anyone else like to comment?
But you do want the opportunity of the flexibility. And I do want to stress as an architect, and I think I'm hearing what a lot of you are saying is, the objective design standards should not be erased to the bottom. They should be erased to the top to encourage or maximize creativity among designers that still balance and respect the neighborhood, overall neighborhood, sense of neighborhood.
That's right.
I think that's.
Sorry. And I, I just, I want to say I also really support the idea that one could be using recycled materials or alternative materials and still have a, a structure that's created that can be compatible with your main building. And I, I don't want to force anyone to do something that would just increase and increase the cost of building on. That is one of the reasons that people look into building ADUs and then don't continue is because they're just shocked at how much it can cost once you actually start making the building look like your other building and then have the same roof materials and the same exterior and then the fire requirement. And you know, it can be quite expensive. And so I want to encourage as many housing units to be formed in kind of gentle ways, you know, in our contextual, um, settings, um, in ways that make sense. I don't want to make them so cost prohibitive that we've become a gated enclave as a whole city.
And, and that is.
The idea of the law.
And that, just to share, that is something that we, in the other jurisdictions, that we are doing objective design standards that a lot of them have talked about, encouraging creativity, flexibility, but also being affordable by design that allows you to explore different, for example, recycled materials, while still respecting the neighborhood character. But intrinsically allowing for that opportunity to select a different palette or choose within a palette of materials makes, makes the development then intrinsically affordable too.
Mr. Bradley, you've taken your mute off. Would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I completely agree with, uh, RDRC members Datwani and Sakai on their comments and, and you, Vice Chair, on, uh, I certainly echo that about materials. And I want to agree also with, um, with the desk chair Garvey on using better materials that really pays off. They last longer, they look better, and it's a win-win situation. So I'll agree with all of you that have voiced your opinion so far on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other last comments on this section? And again, I hear staff saying we are welcome to follow up by email or written missive of any sort if we have more thoughts that come to us after the meeting.
And if I may add to a comment that was made by a community member, if you also, in addition to these comments, would like to include photographs or graphics that you see appropriate, we would be very happy to receive that, too, because that will really help in addition to the written comments. I I I did, are there any then other general comments that we have missed in these different, six different categories of more specific design elements of building and open spaces that folks have? I know we took some of these questions into account, especially with regards to SB nine. But are there any other thoughts or comments before we go into next steps?
I just have a clarifying question. So again, this is for single-family standards, although that would be used as well in the context of an SB nine creation, if you will, correct? So, for instance, comments about duplexes or triplexes would be another day?
That would be in the more multifamily development conversation. But so we will be doing community workshops, surveys as well, coming to you in a similar format to have that more detailed discussion.
Thank you. I see committee member Sakai with his hand up.
I think so. If if these are the single-family objective standards, then where are the development standards or how do the development standards work in parallel with these? Are these in addition to the kind of the the things that are codified in in RS six and RS three zoning districts such as Highland floor area, et cetera? Okay, so these are on top of those?
Yes, they complement, they complement those.
Okay.
And and Mr. Sakai, if there are anything in the current standards that are vexing today, if you will, that's something that we'd like to take a look at also, because there are some standards, development standards with regard to the single family that do make a move towards regulating design.
Yes, they do. And I think think part of that is because, at least from my understanding, that San Carlos does not have official residential design guidelines. And so to some extent, you see design guideline like sections of the RS six and RS three zoning ordinance that that sort of maybe are sort of crossing that line a little bit in guidelines. But I think that's one of the nice things about San Carlos is that there aren't those guidelines and therefore the overall package of restrictions is is lighter than it is in in other jurisdictions, as you've probably researched and seen in your capacity as as consultants, I'm guessing. Okay, well, that that helps clarify. I guess I'm seeing these as sort of compliments or or sort of additional restrictions on top of the zoning answers pretty much most of those questions that I had. But I guess it kind of came about because I I do see some direct overlap and maybe some repetition in in some of these these standards that are already baked into the RS six zoning. And I'm I'm wondering, was that intentional? Or maybe maybe I'm, I frankly don't know the zoning as well as some of you, but it just seems that some of these may be duplicative of of things that are already captured in the zoning, which is why I asked the question, how how does it work with zoning? I'll just put that out there as a question. I guess if if we are to be, if this is a compliment to the zoning, then it shouldn't necessarily reiterate or restate or or be duplicative of things that are already captured in the zoning.
Agreed.
And I can I can also add the the standards in the packet from page twenty-four to, I'm sorry, twenty-two to twenty-four that are specific to just SB nine, as you mentioned, committee member Sakai. Some of it is taken directly from the RS six and RS three zoning. And again, that was done specifically because it was an urgency ordinance and wanting to really get in the objective design standards while we do this sort of like bigger picture, bigger and and to be frank, sort of more in-depth analysis, right? Knowing that this isn't going to address everything. So so the the vision and idea is that once these bigger, broader standards are adopted, that they will just apply to single-family residential and there won't be this separate subset under SB nine. This separate subset, yeah, it's just it's just kind of for now until we get through this process. And it is, and to answer your your question specifically, it is envisioned to be in in addition to some of the development standards that we do have in the code. And, you know, and also to to clarify, you are correct, we do not have design review, we don't have design review guidelines for a single family. So again, we come back to, you know, one of our our favorite findings is compatibility with the neighborhood, right? And that's something that that we talked about. So how do we get to that with some of these standards? I think it's going to be a big, a big discussion point as we move forward as well. But the idea is at the end, we will have one set of objective standards that apply to single family. And then there'll also be some that apply to to multifamily mixed use.
Good. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for that. And Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Vice Chair Clemens. One final comment, and this one is on exterior lighting. On page twenty-three, you talk about exterior lighting being directed downwards, being shielded so that the light doesn't go to the other person's property. I just want to lend my wholehearted support for this, that the doubling the number of dwellings on a piece of property doesn't translate to doubling the light. You know, we talk a lot, especially in the planning commission, on how much light is there? How bright should everybody's signs be? Are they going all night? Can they be turned off? And so I really appreciated this condition, talking about shielding the light, directing it downward. That's a great idea. Thank you.
I I would second that comment. Thank you. My neighbor has installed a dawn, a dusk-to-dawn security lights, and it is shining into my window, and I do not like it. I concur. Committee member Sakai, do you have another comment or question? Your hand is raised. No? No. Okay. Commissioner Bradley or anyone else?
Good for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. I turn it back to staff and MIG.
So we briefly wanted to talk about next steps, and I will just queue that in so Laura can walk us through the next steps that we have with regards to this project. I will share my screen.
Thanks, McCool. And while you're pulling that up, I think that the biggest news is the next step is going to be a a survey. And listening to the discussion this evening, I think, gave us some really great ideas to how to tweak the survey that we've started to put together to ask more specific questions. The the Mr. Crabbe, who had had to leave the meeting, mentioned at the outset that he thought it would be helpful to be able to react to pictures rather than words when we're talking about design. And we, you know, we're starting, we started at a very high level. But this evening, you've expressed a lot of things that you probably like to make sure that we address as part of the objective design standards. And we'd like to get additional community feedback on that. So I thank you very much for sharing those. So the community survey is scheduled to run through June and July. It's part of the ongoing sessions that we will continue to have to reach out to folks and come back with the emerging standards a little bit later this summer so that we can share with you what has been developed at a preliminary basis, based on on what we've heard this evening, particularly with regard to the comments that you had on the SB nine. As as Andrea said at the beginning, we are kind of looking at those as two two different things this evening, but they are certainly intertwined. And the comments that you had, I thought were on SB nine, were very informative and will take into account when we're looking at the the objective design standards for single-family homes, because eventually they will apply. Appreciate your time this evening. Just really great deep thought and your your members of the public always have good things to contribute. So we we appreciate that as well. Andrea, did you want to have any closing remarks for the evening?
Um, yeah, just wanted to again reiterate that there are constant opportunities for additional feedback. We have both the website for design standards as well as SB nine up there, as well as my email and Sudhi's email, who are the respective project managers for those. We welcome, you know, any comments you have throughout this process. I know oftentimes ideas and thoughts come after the factor at, you know, inopportune times, not necessarily during the so we definitely want to want to get all of that from you. So just again, thank you for your time and really appreciate all your work and and feedback on this.
Thank you for that, staff, and back to the agenda. I think I'm going to, let me see. Actually, there is no item that gives updates as usual. Is that right? Yes, correct, because this is a joint study session, a meeting. Structure is is a little different. So if it's the pleasure of the commission and the committee, we can adjourn when you're ready. We don't usually take an adjournment vote, which is new for me. So I guess I will just adjourn. No, that's fine. We're not in the habit of taking a vote. So I, with this, I guess I get to adjourn the meeting. If I had a gavel, I will get to gavel. Thank you all for being here tonight. A very enjoyable study session. Thank you to everyone for putting it together.
Excellent study session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really excellent.
Thanks, Kristin. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ellen. Have a good week, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Take care. See you again. Thank you.